This is the January 4th, 2022, meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. Everyone on today's call is participating remotely, and I'm opening this meeting by roll call. So when I call your name, please respond here. Diane?
Yes.
Danielle?
Here.
Jerry?
Here.
Nancy?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
And we also have our library-directed Dina.
Here.
And also on the call today is our Finance Committee Liaison, Eric Chu.
Here.
Thank you. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum today. Our first item of business is the secretary's report from December 14th. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions on those minutes? Okay, nobody has anything, then we just need a motion.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting. Second.
All in favor by roll call. Diane?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
And myself. Hi, thank you. Next on the agenda is the expense report.
I hope you all received it. I just sent it this afternoon, so my apologies if you didn't get it. And I can review in detail if you need me to, if you didn't get it. But it's not all that different from what we just saw on December 14th. At this point, the salary line is 49.8% spent out, and we are exactly halfway through the fiscal year. So we're right on track with salary lines. As for the operating lines, I think that we're on track with spending in all lines, but I wanted to point out a few things to you. Our energy line, which is 42.3% spent out, that reflects ever-source bills through December. And just as a reminder, bills always increase in the winter, as you well know from being homeowners. So that percentage will certainly shift soon, as December's bill was already about 17% more than it was last year at this time. Of course, we're in the building differently than we were last year at this time, so that could be contributing, but it also could be that energy prices are rising. So I'm sure we're going to be spending out that line quicker, January, February, March. So really just kind of wanted to give you a heads-up/reminder on that. And I also just wanted to point out the telephone line, which is 21.8% spent out. And you may have noticed it's been at about the same amount for months now. So I just wanted to point out that, as you know, our phone bills are on a contract with the town, so I don't get the bills directly. It's paid for by the town, and then the town reports what they've spent for the library, and that's how I adjust the budget. We usually get monthly reconciliation reports from the Finance Office, but as you know, they've been extremely short-staffed and have had quite a few burdens in that office within the past few months. So we haven't received those reconciliation forms. So since September, I don't know what the phone amounts are, which is why that line has stayed the same. So they're paying our phone bill, great, and eventually we'll catch up and it'll be fine. So I really just wanted to point that out as an FYI, that there's no cause for concern. So we're 74.2% spent out for operating, which is typical at this time of year, which puts us at 54.6 total for the fiscal year. So I think we're right where we need to be for the halfway mark. So unless you have any specific questions, that's what I have for you.
I don't have any questions. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay. You just need a motion?
Motion to accept the expense budget.
Second.
All in favor? Diane?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Jerry?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Myself. Hi, thank you.
Thanks, all.
Moving on to new business, we have the FY '23 budget.
Yes, so first I just want to thank Nancy and Steve, who are the library's finance committee, for taking a look at drafts with me and weighing in. And I also want to thank Eric for being on tonight's Zoom call. As you know, Eric is our Finance Committee Liaison. We haven't had a Finance Committee Liaison for a few fiscal years now, so I think it's great. So thank you, Eric. Thanks for being here. This is the first time we're reviewing the budget as a group. So I'm going to go into things pretty detailed, and then I'm also going to just give an overview of the narrative I'm working on to turn in with the budget drafts. And then, Eric, if you have anything to weigh, any insight from the Finance Committee that you want to weigh in with, please feel free, or, you know, we'll have a discussion. And then, my board, you'll approve the drafts before we end the call tonight, because they are due this Friday to the Town Accountant's Office. So I'm starting with the expense budget that's level-funded. We were asked to submit two budgets, as you all know. So the level-funded budget should be meeting contractual obligations, which it does. And it does not include any adjustments on the salary lines, except for some decreases, which I'll mention in a minute. But the budget memo from the Town Accountant indicated that we should not include increases for staff, as the board selectmen haven't set percentage increases for non-union staff, and the union contract is currently in negotiations. So those numbers will be plugged in, which is very typical. I think you all know that. That's very typical at this point of the budget process, anyway. So director's line is level, patron services associate level. You'll see a slight decrease of 1.8% in the tech line, and that, of course, as you can figure out, is due to our staff turnover this fiscal year. So we're, you know, people are coming in with less hourly amounts, our library tax. And then there's also a dip in longevity, for the same reason, because people who are earning longevity are no longer here, some of the people who are earning longevity. And the custodian stays level for now as well. So there is a decrease of 1.1% in that salary line with the level-funded budget. And then, again, that's because of a changeover in staff. In terms of that, does anyone have any questions yet about the level-funded salary portion? No, okay, good. Okay. And moving on to the expense portion of the level-funded budget. Again, it should meet contractual obligations. In the Finance Committee meeting that I watched online a few weeks ago, they spoke about a 25% increase for ever-sourced, which I've heard in the news as well. I don't know if the Town Accountant wants us to include this 25% increase for ever-sourced or not, but it is a contractual obligation, so I stuck it in there for the level-funded budget. So that does increase our energy line from $10,500, which it's been the, in six years we've been in this building, to $13,125. I don't know if that's going to stay in, or if they're going to, I have no idea, because, you know, they haven't met with the Finance Committee yet. So I have no idea what's going to happen with that, but I put it in anyway. If you want me to take it out, I will, but I think Nancy and Steve were good with it going in, so in it went. Building and grounds stays the same at $2,500. Office equipment stays the same at $100. Tech support is a contractual obligation, as you know, with the sales network. And so there is a 6.5% increase in that for tech support for FY '23, up from 16,98 to 1809. Telephone, I left the same at $775, because that seems to be working well. Education increased from $100 for the past two fiscal years to $500. And as I mentioned to you in an email, or I shared the budget memo with you from the Town Accountant, we're asked to bring back up things like the education lines for training purposes. We took those decreases the past, the current fiscal year and the previous fiscal year due to COVID. So now that we're returning to somewhat, some kind of normalcy, that's bumped back up to $500. The sales expenses line, as you know, contractual obligation, which actually sees a slight decrease somehow this fiscal year, or for FY '23, rather, to $14,528. Office supplies, I'm also bumping up. It's not an educational or training expense, but as we've discussed this fiscal year, only having $1,000 in the office supplies line is not wonderful for a library that is purchasing a lot of ink and paper and supplies in order to process books. So it would be great to get that back up to $2,000, which is what it was pre-COVID. Children's education supplies line stays the same at $400. The other supplies line, which is what we use to purchase our material, that stays the same at $23,500. And travel goes back up to $1,000, which it was pre-COVID. We hardly ever hit that $1,000 mark, but that's where it normally is. So that's expenses level-funded. And when you combine salary and expenses, we get a total request of $284,779 with a level-funded budget. I do want to point out that, as you all know, I don't know if Eric knows or not, so I'm doing this also for Eric's benefit, but I think it's a good refresher for all of our board as well. We have a municipal appropriation requirement from the state. So the state says that we, they use a formula, which takes the current fiscal year and the two previous fiscal years, the two previous fiscal years, you know, before that. So for, in this purpose, we're looking at FY '20, '21, and '22. You take the total appropriated amounts from those fiscal years, not what you actually spent, but the appropriated amounts from those fiscal years. You add them together, you divide by three, you multiply by 1.25, and you get what should be your appropriation requirement. So this $284,779 does not meet our municipal appropriation requirement for FY '23, which is $286,448. I'm not concerned about that, because we know that there are going to be increases within the salary lines, because we know that the union contracts will be negotiated, and that the union employees, of which we have eight, will be, you know, seeing increases. We hope that the non-union staff are going to get a cost of living increase, if nothing else. So I'm not, I think that we will make up the difference there. But this is the first time I'm presenting a budget where the draft does not meet the municipal appropriation requirement, and that does make me a little nervous, because as you know, we need to meet that municipal appropriation requirement in order to be a certified library. And we don't want to even have to think about not being a certified library in the state. So it's concerning, just because I haven't seen it happen before. But again, I think it's going to fix itself once the salary increases are put in. So that is where we're at, level-funded. Any questions about that?
So, Dina, I have a question.
Yes.
Your salaries, is that taken into account? I don't know if you have anybody that's on minimum wage, but you got that included as part of that, just in case?
They're all above minimum wage. Yeah, they're all.
So it doesn't affect you?
Yep, so that doesn't affect us. No, every, they're, two of us are non-union, and the eight other staff members are union. And the union contract is, for our staff members, or where our staff members fall in that wage scale for the contract, is well above the minimum wage. So they're good, but thank you for mentioning that, because yeah, that's something people will need to be focused on this year. No, so thank you.
No problem.
And then also, I wanted to point out, just to make sure everyone's clear on this too, for when we discuss the additional budget. As a reminder, the salary lines are just salary, so that any benefits provided from the town, like health insurance, are not included in those lines. That comes from, not from the library's budget, that comes from some magical budget. It doesn't come from the library's budget. It comes from another town budget, not ours. So just keep that in mind, that what you're looking at is strictly salary and not any extras that people.
Would that, can that be applied to your, to the state requirement?
The, but, benefits cannot. It's got to be what the, what the library, the appropriated budget.
What you spend on a library.
Yep, so the appropriated for the library specifically. It does factor into a portion of what we report to the state, but it doesn't count towards this municipal appropriation requirement. So they do factor in those amounts, but not for this purpose.
Gotcha.
Would be great if they did, but no, they don't. So any, any other questions or thoughts on this? And when it's level-funded, it's pretty straightforward, so it's kind of, you know, is what it is. So if you don't have any other comments now, I'll bump onto the additional, because that's got some more discussion to it. And I do want to just review a little bit about the position. I know my board knows about the, what's in question for the additional funding, but I will just elaborate it on it a little bit for Eric's benefit. Plus, I think it's just important for us to be reminded, myself included, about the history of the position and what it could mean going forward. So in the additional budget, which includes the level-funded pieces, where we're seeing an increase is within the library tech line. And we are seeing an increase of $16,557, which would allow us to bump up our children's room assistant from 19 hours a week to 35 hours a week. So just as a reminder, my position is 35 hours. The patron services associate, which is non-union, is 32 hours. And the rest of the staff, so the library tax and the custodian, are all part-time. So the most, the text worker, 19 hours. We have three 19-hour positions, a 16-hour position, two 12s, and a nine-and-a-half hour a week position, or that's the average for her. And then our custodian is 12 hours, so just as a reminder of where we stand. So we're looking to get a third full-time position, bumping up the children's room assistant from 19 to 35 hours. So this has been something we've been talking about since early 2020. The position was created for FY '19. And at the time, that seemed like a huge accomplishment for FY '19. So for a bit of background/reminder, we moved from the Russell Memorial Library over here to Middle Road in December of 2015, so it's already been six years, which is like mind-boggling to me that we've been in this building for six years. But at the time, we knew this would happen, that once we got here and we had the space and we had an actual children's room, we knew people were going to want children's programming and, you know, activities tailored to kids, which happened at the old library, but it usually happened at the Council on Aging, because the library really didn't have space for programming and activities for kids. And there was no children's room at the Russell Memorial Library. It was a children's corner. There were no chairs to sit on. You sat on the floor. So there was no hanging out and reading, you know, with your kids in the library. So moving here was a huge deal. Now, at Russell Memorial, there was no need for a children's librarian either, because there was no, no space, for one. And I think that was a draw for me when I got hired here in 2015, was that I am a youth services librarian. That's my background. So wow, how great, I get to be a director and also be a services librarian, not realizing how complicated that would be. So flash to us moving here, and the demand is here for programs. And then, you know, it's really easy to see that, you know, maybe for a year or two, yes, I can be a director and a children's librarian, but that's not working out so great. So fortunately, the board agreed with me on that. And then we had support from the town administration and the Finance Committee to have this part-time position. And I remember being in my pajamas at the Finance Committee meeting, where we were asking for this additional position. And I was in my pajamas, because I had just come from pajama storytime. So it wasn't just like, that's what I do here. But I was coming straight from pajama storytime, right into the Finance Committee meeting, which they were nice enough to hold at the library, because we had the program happening here that night. And I remember someone on the committee asking me, is 19 hours going to be enough? And it was like, I was just so thrilled that we, this was being entertained. A position was being entertained, that if they'd agreed to 10 hours, I would have said, it's fine. So of course, at the time, yeah, that's going to be good. We're going to make this work. And then we quickly, I think, within like that first, you know, maybe six months even, knew it wasn't enough, because we finally got what we wanted. Circulation skyrocketed, like 40%. For the first time ever in the library's history, we circulated 100,000 physical items, so not digital items, physical items went out the door here. And that was a 40% increase from 2018. Our program attendance increased by 35%, so we all were rewarded and got what we wanted, but then it still wasn't enough, because people still wanted more and more. So that's why in 2020, the conversation started about what do we do to increase this position? And then COVID happened, as we all know. And so now here we are, going into 2022. We've obviously, for this nearly two years, we've had to scale back what we do with the library, because we have not, aside from doing outside programs in the warmer months, we have not reintroduced indoor programs here yet. At the library, our program room is only certified to hold 40 people. We've put more people in here than that, but it's really, it's a small space, as anyone who's been in here knows. So we haven't entertained the in-person programming yet. But we've continued, you know, we offer these incredible take-and-make, you know, program kits. We're doing winter reading programs. We've done a lot of online challenges. So our children's room assistant has still been doing all of those pieces, even though the programs aren't necessarily in person. And at the same time, they've been, you know, developing our very sought-after children's collection and working on those kinds of things. So it feels like now that we're looking at, coming into 2022, our beautiful pavilion that's nearly complete out back, you know, so by spring 2022, even if we're not doing indoor programs, we're certainly going to go full-on with the relaunch of programs outside on the pavilion or under the pavilion for kids. We want to get back to where we were in 2019, and then eventually surpass that. And I think in order to do that, like now's the time to get us that full-time position, so that we can successfully relaunch into that, be ready for it when, you know, summer comes. And then looking beyond that, an important piece of the children's room assistant position is to offer outreach to the schools. And at 19 hours a week, when we're open to the public 45, that position never gets to do outreach to the schools. So I do the outreach to the schools, which I love, but again, I find myself juggling two jobs. And if we had a full-time children's room assistant, that person could be focused on the outreach to the schools. And we don't even, I mean, our outreach to schools should be all schools in Acushnet. And we only really have time right now to focus on our two public schools, but we have a parochial school in town. A lot of those kids use our library. It would be great if we could have a relationship with the parochial school in town, so that we foster those relationships of, you know, kids who come in with their parents after school. So having that full-time position would allow us to do that, too. Plus, that person could take on other things that I still do, like all of the book ordering, because there isn't enough time for that person to do the book ordering. So they might recommend titles to purchase, but they don't actually sit down and do the ordering. It would really, I think it would, it's necessary, and I think now's the time, is basically where I'm heading with this, if you couldn't tell. And, yeah, so that's the big chunk from salary. So that's the big push. I also included in the expense line, for that one, you know, towards the bottom, that other supplies line, that's what we use to purchase our material. Right before COVID, we had gotten it up to $26,500, and then had to drop it before we submitted the budget in 2020 for FY '21. So I would love to get that back up to $26,500. And again, as a reminder, and maybe something, Eric, I'm guessing you don't know this about libraries, but another requirement from the state is that we need to spend 16% of our appropriated budget on material for direct patron use. So this fiscal year, 16% of our budget is $45,141. We are only, we have a budget of $23,500. So we have to spend about $22,000 additionally to meet this requirement. And so we have to use sources like state aid, the Friends of the Library, we have a revolving fund, we do have a gift account, so we pool money from there to make up the difference. But, you know, our Friends of the Library have not been able to fundraise for two years. They haven't been able to hold book sales. Our state aid has not dipped, but it's held pretty steady. Our revolving fund has definitely seen a drop, because we weren't charging fines for well over a year, so that's seen a drop. Just having that extra funds within the appropriated budget would allow us to use the extra funds for programming, because another piece of our budget is that we don't have any money in our appropriated budget for programming. So that all has to come from other sources. So that's the only change in the expense portion of the additional funding, is to get our supplies line for books and other patron material from $23,500 to $26,500. So the additional budget with the level-funded pieces, not including any salary increases, aside from changing a tech three position from 19 hours to 35 hours, that budget would be $304,336. And again, that's a difference when you put the two together, of about $19,000 from level-funded. So I know that's a lot of information. So please ask questions if you have any, or if you need a clarification, or if you want to add something, please feel free. Oh, I didn't, how did I forget this? I've got a gazillion notes here. It's because I'm not in my own office. But I also just wanted to point out, and I know that this isn't going to, it should factor into a decision about budgets, but I know it won't, because it seems more, I don't want to use the word emotional, but I guess it sort of seems emotional. But in 2021, we've lost three part-time staff members to accepted full-time positions at neighboring libraries. That should be a red flag to somebody that something needs to change here. It's just, if they had gone on to work somewhere else, not in a library, it wouldn't seem so bad. But they've taken their talent and what they've learned working here for numerous years, and they've brought that to a neighboring library, and it really stinks. So, and one of those positions, one of those staff members was our children's room assistant. So that's been difficult, also because, you know, that so much of what happens in a library is about fostering relationships with your community. And so when you lose one of the big, you know, one of the big pieces of that, the community is confused as to why that person is no longer there. And we're dealing with three missing people. And then when the community walks in, they're like, hey. And then when the community walks in, they're like, hey, we're so and so, we're so and so, we're so and so. It's like so awkward. Oh, they went to go work wherever, you know, that's. Um, I feel like I'm constantly having to say it's not me. Um, but anyway, we can't afford to lose any additional employees here. Um, and that is another reason, a very important reason to me as to why now is the time to take some action on. Bumping up a part-time employee to a full-time employee. Okay, that was all I had to say, sorry.
So Dana, just a little background about myself, um, a financial wizard, I am not. Um, but a common sense kind of person I am, and after watching, I kind of watch your meetings pretty often. And seeing what had happened to your staff um, actually kind of hit me personally. Because I felt bad because we have a problem in this town and apparently it's been ongoing for some time where salaries. Let's just say they're not up to snuff. Um, and that's part of the reason why we're losing people. Um, I personally would like to see something done about that and that's kind of one of the reasons why I joined the finance committee. And I am definitely on board with this um, position increase. Um, I will recommend it myself um, when it comes to time. We we can't lose good staff just because we can't provide hours and or a good salary, a competitive salary. Now we're pretty tight fiscally, um, but we got to figure out where we can find, you know, some of this money. But that's that's my two cents.
Thank you. Thank you. I that's, I really appreciate hearing that from someone who doesn't hear me talk about this like all the time. So it's one thing when my family says this to me, so but it's something else when someone else does, so thank you.
You're you're very welcome, but yeah, I I definitely, and it's not just the library. It's it's a lot of the departments in town. Um, as you know, we lost our town administrator, um, we lost our IT director, we lost, almost lost Jim. Um, and it is, it's a bunch of changes going on in town. And that, if anything, should be a wake-up call to anybody that's involved in the town as a whole. And that's concerning to me. You know, Heather also has some stuff that she needs to deal with, but obviously I have to stay out of it, but yeah, it it's not just you. But yeah, you got my support for sure.
Thank you.
Can I add something that I just want to thank you, Eric, for speaking out in our behalf? And I also taking the time to watch the meetings and just be aware of how important the library is to this community. I don't think we hear that enough, so it's so nice to hear you just say that loud and clear. Thank you.
I know for the longest time myself, I'm like, man, libraries, this day and age, because I'm an IT person. I mean, that's what I do for a living and in this day and age, it's like, who needs libraries now? But when you see all the good programs that you guys offer over there, it's like, yeah, it it's money well spent. And I I've always been an advocate for the library, ever since I rethought that whole position, that whole department, it's like. Okay, you know what, growing up, it's one thing, you know, I remember going to library when I was a kid, you know, and learning about weather and always pulling books out of the, you know, book racks and. Because that was my quote-unquote career choice. I wanted to be a meteorologist when I grew up. And that's what led me into the computer field because I'm not very good at math, so, but that's all right. But yeah, I I'm very impressed. One of the little views that you guys see on your YouTube channel, that's that's me most likely. One of those is was one of those is me, so yeah, definitely follow you guys.
Well, thank you. We we definitely appreciate it and your support means a lot.
No problem.
Did you have any questions to the to the uh, to the budgets, either one, Eric or anyone else?
No, I think I think I think in terms of level fund, I mean, everything seems to be okay. I just got, just got to figure out what you're gonna do for your state requirements, but. Um, other than that, your increases and I don't think that's too terrible. But again, that's just me. I'm only one person, but I'll make my voice known at the meeting, so.
That's eight of us who don't think it's too terrible, so that's good. That's a start. Are we um, we're presenting the budget in front of the finance committee? That's the. Has that been set already?
So I, let me double check my calendar, but I believe. Um, I don't think it's the twenty-sixth.
It is the twenty-sixth.
It is a twenty-sixth, okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, actually, it's a COA library and animal control officer, so part of that meeting, I have to step out, so. But um, yeah, that, yeah, the twenty-sixth is um, at seven o'clock is the tentative schedule right now.
Excellent. And I just finished that town hall.
Um, I don't know, I think it's gonna be too premature to say. But yeah, the the plaintiffs are due to see, the plaintiffs would do it uh, town hall as of right now.
Yeah, okay.
COVID pending, how's that?
As is everything else.
Yep.
And I know that the finance committee hasn't met with the board of selectmen yet. That happens next week, I think, on the twelfth, yeah, so. Okay, so my board, so you know, they haven't met yet, like normally that's already happened and it hasn't happened yet this year. Um, and for this this cycle. Um, but if you're a, my board, if you're able to watch that meeting, just to get a sense of where things are, you know, I'll also watch it. And I'll, you know, if I learn anything, I'll certainly report that to you, but just to get an idea of where people stand. It's like, I I do think it's important to tune into those meetings when you can, which is why, you know, I watched the finance committee meeting a few weeks back. Um, just to get a sense of, you know, where things, you know, stand, I mean, it's early days. But just to sort of know where where what people are thinking. Um, so I I certainly will watch that meeting next week, but I, you know, if you're able to, I hope you will as well. And then if you're all able to be at the twenty, meeting on the twenty-sixth, of course, understanding if it is in person and you don't want to go, I totally understand that. But I know normally um, our board is usually very well represented at any kind of um, finance committee or town meeting like that. So we'll we'll be in touch, right? It it may be on Zoom, who knows, right? Who knows? Well, thank you, Eric, for joining us today. We do appreciate your time and your insight and your input.
And my pleasure, anytime. If you guys need anything, Dana knows how to get ahold of me. Um, and you know, I can help out wherever I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Take care, bye-bye.
You too, bye. And the next item on the agenda is the director's report. Well, first we need to go back to the budget because you all need, you all need to approve it. We need to vote on that, sorry, my fault. I was skipping ahead, I was so excited that that, you know. So, okay, why why don't we, why don't we make a motion?
Do we need two motions for each budget or can we make a motion for just?
I think you can do a blanket motion so that you're approving the both budgets as presented. I think you, that's fine to do it that way.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty twenty-three budgets, both of them. Second it.
All in favor, Diane?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hi.
Jerry? Nancy? Steve? Can you hear you, Steve?
Hi.
Thank you and myself, I. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, everyone. Now we can move on to the director's report announcement. So I um, did not prepare a formal report for you, as you know, because I didn't send anything to you. Um, and it wasn't because I forgot to forgot to attach it. But um, you know, not too too much has changed since December fourteenth, when we last met. So there wasn't too much to update you on. Um, but I do just want to point out that we had a really busy week last week during um, school vacation week. We've launched that winter read and bead program, so anyone um, who is in kindergarten through the eighth grade. Is able to stop by the library still um, to sign up for that program. And you know, it doesn't matter that we're a week into it, you can catch up. There isn't really too much to this, other than stopping by the library once a week. To, you know, borrow a book or two um, and collect your bead. So we really want to stress to parents in particular, we're not asking you to log anything. We're not asking the kids to write anything for us. It's just popping in the library. You know, getting your initial um, brag tag and bead. And then each week through February, through the end of February, coming in um, for another bead. Um, and then there will also be an a cushion at Wildcats brag tag at the end as well for a cushion at students. Um, we have about thirty-five kids, I think, participating so far, which is great. We've never done anything like this before, so we certainly weren't expecting summer reading numbers. Um, but we're excited that um, we had a good turnout last week. We've had more kids come in this week and we hope they continue to come in. Um, and again, that program runs through the end of February. Um, it is linked to our Beanstack uh, program. And uh, but you do not have to participate on Beanstack in order to participate in this uh, winter reading program. Um, if you do participate on Beanstack, you get a bonus bead, so that's totally optional. Um, Beanstack is a great way, though, I will say, for adults as well to keep track of your reading. So if you have a personal goal for two thousand and twenty-two of books you'd like to, like a um, an amount of books you'd like to read, if you're someone who does that. Um, Beanstack's a great way to log your titles and keep track. So um, I saw that firsthand with my mom, who in two thousand and twenty-one logged a hundred and eighty-five audiobooks. So, you know, it's uh, it's a great way. It's a great way to um, keep track of your meetings, so I'll just give that little plug and and then a shout out to my mom. Um. Are you gonna surpass that goal for two thousand and twenty-two? Is that her? Well, we'll see. I I'm, I can't even believe that that's how many books she listens to. But audiobooks are, you know, as you know, are great to listen to while you're, you know, cleaning or washing dishes or, you know, out and about doing something. So um, and that was a great way for her to to um, you know, be entertained while while cleaning. Absolutely. So, but we'll see what happens and she hasn't set a goal for two thousand and twenty-two. We'll just see what happens. But I think she's already logged three in the winter reading challenge, so and it's only January fourth, so you know. I don't think I clean that much. You know, it's a lot of holiday cleaning up, so you know, we'll see. I don't know if it's uh, that, but but it's a lot of holiday takedown, right? So.
If she wants some extra time, welcome to come over here.
I'll let her know. Get a lot more books in in this house. Yeah, I will share that info. Um, but anyway, so we're excited about this winter reading, you know, challenge. Whether you do it on Beanstack or just come in for beads, that's great. And if an adult wants beads too, hey, we'll give you beads, whatever, you know, feel free to step up. Um, we also have those two mystery sticker puzzle posters that we spoke about at the last meeting. We started that um, on on December twenty-first to tie into the winter solstice. And so we'll keep those up all winter long. When you stop into the library, you just ask for some stickers. We'll give you the stickers to go put in um, on the puzzle and we have had great participation with that so far. A lot of kids were excited to see something that they remember from the summertime as, you know, something to do when they visit now. Um, so there's, there's been a lot of enthusiasm for that, which is great. And other than that, we've just been, you know, trucking along and I got to hand it to my staff, as I've done many times. That, you know, they're doing their very best to keep themselves safe and then to also keep their coworkers safe. So this is an environment that I have no worry coming into when I, you know, come into work every day. I know everyone's doing their very best, you know, to to keep each other healthy and safe. And I really appreciate that our staff is so dedicated to that. So um, even though we're we're in, I don't, I don't know, like. A year ago, if you remember, we were working like partially remote and then partially in-house. We were still doing the curbside. And things seem crazier now than they did a year ago and we're open to the public forty-five hours a week. And we're all staffs in here at the same time and um, but we're doing our very best to make that work and continuing to do right by each other. So I I really appreciate the staff and I appreciate the public for coming in and wearing their masks as per the um, policy for other library. And um, you know, I hope we just continue to make the library a safe, safe place to visit. Um, as we move through this, this wave or whatever it is, so. Other than that, status quo. And I'll have um, the statistics for December for you at the next meeting, uh, because they weren't ready um, for me to compile. So. Something to look forward to. Does anybody have anything else to add? Any questions, anything?
On on that pavilion, what are they gonna do for the floor? Is it just gonna be dirt?
Astro turf. So it's gonna, it's gonna be, you know, faux grass, so grass that we'll ever need to be, faux grass.
Just remind them not to go and cut it.
Right, no, they'll know. They'll know. Oh, that's, that's a great question. Thank you. I don't, yeah, I don't think we've talked about that, but that's what it's um, gonna be. It's, I think it'll be um, it, the reasons why we had looked, we had thought about that was because it'll be durable. Um, it's good for drainage, so we won't be worried of, you know, if it, we get a really, you know. A storm that comes through on the diagonal, we won't have to worry about, you know, it's it's going to dry. Um, so we won't have to worry about, you know, having a floor that doesn't dry or puddles forming, that that won't be a problem.
Okay.
And um, I don't know if you've been by, but the DPW, I'm glad you mentioned the pavilion. The DPW has um, done what they can do for now for um, grading the walkway. And um, they'll be back to do the seating and and to do the paving in the spring. Um, but I think it looks awesome. I I did not know what that was gonna look like. Um, and you know, when I trust Jim Merritt, as you know, and I trust Dan Menard from the DPW. Because they haven't failed us, but I just wasn't, I couldn't visualize what that was gonna look like. And it's not even done and I already think it looks great. So hopefully, if you haven't had a chance to see it yet, you will see it and hopefully you agree. Um, but I really think once we can start using that in the springtime, I think that's gonna be a huge draw for this library and for the community. Um, as a whole, because I think it's gonna be a very impressive outdoor space. And you know, there are a lot of lovely libraries in this area, but I don't know of any library in the area that has that kind of an outdoor space. So I think it's got so much potential and I'm really excited to see, you know, what we'll be able to do with it. And I know the staff is very excited also. So. Be good. Anybody else have anything? Any questions or anything?
No.
All right. Do we want to set the next meeting date? Yeah, I had not even thought about that. Well, if the finance committee meeting is the twenty-sixth, which let's say that's gonna be the twenty, like for sure, probably won't change. Maybe it won't be in person, but it it um, most likely won't change from that date. Um, I mean, I would be fine with waiting until after that if you want to hold off, but certainly if you want it to meet before then, we could too. But I don't anticipate anything happening within the next few weeks that we would need to meet before that. Um, so if you wanted to wait till February, that would, that would be fine by me. Okay, I think that sounds good. Um, what dates do you have in mind for February? Is February eighth an option for anyone? That's a Tuesday. That's fine for me. Does that work for everyone else?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, that'll, that'll be good because. And we'll go back to our four o'clock? Yes, if that's good for everyone, that'd be good here. And that works for everybody. Um, now the question will be about Zoom. We can probably um, work through that as the time gets closer. I think so, yeah. And we'll either do, we can either do full Zoom like this. Or we can, yeah, maybe we might be able to do an option where if you want to go to the library to the meeting, you can. But we can also hold the Zoom as well for. But we can also hold the Zoom as well for anyone that doesn't feel comfortable. We could, you know, explore that option as well. Um, but I think the next couple of weeks are probably going to tell us, you know, better how, how we're going to be. So rather, you know, let's just play it safe. And we'll just say that it's Tuesday, February eighth at four o'clock, location to be determined. Sounds, sounds good. And, and I'm, I'm putting a note um for myself right now that by February first, that week before, I will, you know, put out feelers of what we want to do. That way, we have time to um, you know, set things up with a cushion of cable and get, you know, the notice in and all that. So I will um give us a week so that we're not scrambling, trying to decide. That's perfect. Well, at least we have the date and the time, so the location is, that's, you know, that's not too bad. Exactly. Nope, that's great. Great, sounds like a plan. All right, if we have nothing else, then we need a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting today.
Oh, second, yeah.
All in favor, Diane?
Hi.
Danielle?
Hey.
Jerry? Nancy?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Myself, I. Thank you. This January fourth, twenty-twenty-two meeting of the Cushing at Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is five fifty-four. Thank you.